Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council meeting for Tuesday, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two. We'll call the meeting to order. Approve any council agenda additions or corrections?
Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you. I made a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve the agenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, implication Hunter's Ridge Community Church. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. I was here, um, two weeks ago. And you're giving me credit for the beautiful, warm weather. So I'm not sure how to take it tonight. Let's, uh, let's begin with prayer here. Father, uh, thank you for this, uh, chance to meet tonight and at least, uh, for me, I have the opportunity to pray for the welfare of the city of Hutchinson. To pray that it would be a place of peace, to pray that it would be a place flourishing, um, for our community, for our homes, our neighborhoods, um, our churches, just our community in general, Lord. And I think about also, uh, praying for our healthcare workers, people in our hospitals, uh, for our schools, for our teachers and students. Um, we just want to bring them before you the challenges that many of them face. I also want to bless our leaders here tonight, uh, and Garrett Forseer and Patrick May and Dave Sebastian, Mary Christensen, Chad and Matt, Melissa and Kent. And if I'm missing others, Lord, forgive me, but I just want to pray for them, Lord, that you bless them in their deliberations tonight, give them wisdom, uh, give them encouragement. Um, uh, we pray, thank you for the, the many, um, people who serve this community, our police, especially Tom Gifferson and all he leads and Matt, the fire department, our emergency responders, even our business leaders, Father. Again, Lord, we ask that you would, um, you would be speaking to them and bless them, Father. And again, Lord, I guess, uh, I want to encourage you to push us, push us towards you, God. For blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. And so, God, thank you for this time that they gather tonight. And I pray all this in Jesus' precious name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is point to the Leavens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations and community service to the city. Does anybody have anything? All right, we got a, uh, actually three resolutions. If I write, I'll do all three of them at once.
Yep.
Uh, it is resolution number one, five, four, one, one, resolution accepting cash donations to the Hutchinson Police Department from Thomas Kennedy. B is resolution number one, five, four, one, two, resolution accepting cash donation to the Hutchinson Police Department from the Village Ranch. And C is resolution number one, five, four, one, seven, resolution accepting cash donations to the Hutchinson Police Department and Hutchinson Fire Department from William M. Nimetz Estate.
Mayor Council, I think it'd be appropriate for us to acknowledge the, the donation that we received. I mean, obviously, all of these are a blessing to the city, but the one that we received from the, the Nimetz Estate, it's almost three hundred thousand dollars. Um, that's going to our police and our fire. And I know, I don't think they have an exact idea on what, uh, they're going to be using that, uh, that for, but I know it's something that they want to make sure is honorable to, to the Nimetz Estate. But that's a pretty significant donation to, to the city. Like I said, we, we always welcome any type of donation, but generally, we're not receiving that high of a donation to the city. So I thought it was important to at least acknowledge that, um, for the police and fire station, so.
Motion.
I'll make a motion to accept all three of those resolutions and thank you to each and every one of those resolutions.
I will second that.
Motion by Mary, second by Chad to accept all three resolutions, donations. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie, public comment, uh, citizen addressing the council, just please come forward, say your name and address. All right, approval in minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two.
Make a motion to approve them. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the regular meeting minutes of January eleventh. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. Consent agenda, this will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for discussion. Uh, A is approval of issuing short-term gambling license to the Shady Lane Sportsman's Club on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two at McLeod County Fairgrounds. B is approval of engineering service agreement with Erickson Engineering for Bridge Deck Rehabilitation Project. Uh, C is approval of rescinding the Hutchinson City COVID-nineteen vaccination and testing and face covering policy. B is approval of resolutions to donate surplus property. Um, we have two, uh, resolutions underneath there. Resolution number one, five, four, one, three, dispatch counsel to Blue Earth County. And resolution number one, five, four, one, four, dispatch counsel to McLeod County. Uh, E is approval of resolution number one, five, four, one, eight, resolution adopting facts of finding of facts and reasons for approval of conditional use permit to allow a tattoo establishment in a C-three central commercial district at eighteen Main Street South with favorable planning commission recommendation. F is approval of resolution number one, five, four, one, nine, resolution adopting facts, finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit to move structure larger than two hundred square feet from one thirty-five Franklin Street north to two twenty-five Washington Avenue West with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, G is approval of amending, uh, addendum to the develop agreement between the city of Hutchinson and Hutchinson Up Town Commons LLC. H is approval of amending to, addendum to a develop agreement between the city of Hutchinson and Hutchinson Cobble LLC. Uh, I is reappearance of Mike Cannon to the EDA Board to December of two thousand twenty-seven. And J is, uh, claims appropriation and contract payments. Is there anything anybody wants pulled off? You entertain a motion to approve the balance?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie. We have a public hearing.
I would suggest you move down to, um, communications, request submissions. We still have twenty minutes before all the hearings are to start.
All right. Uh, Creekside Year End Reporting.
Twenty minutes gives me plenty of time to work with. Sorry. Good evening, Mayor, Council, those in the audience that are watching at home for Don't Know Who I Am, Andy Kosak, Creekside Soils Manager, here tonight to give you a, a quick recap on, uh, refuse and compost funds. Uh, just review of operations for two thousand twenty-one. So I'd like to start out with just the Creekside Soils mission statement here and to help abbreviate the, the presentation. I won't read through it, um, as it was included in the packet, but this is something that was created uh, ten-plus years ago. I don't recall exactly when, but it's something that still stands true today. Um, and I feel that we as an operation or as a department adhere to it quite well, um, and, and look to do so moving forward into the future. So jumping forward into the refuse fund, just to clarify or give definition of what that fund is responsible for, um, as, as stated, Creekside, it consists of the two, the two funds, compost and refuse. The refuse fund, through the, through the refuse fund, the city of Hutch charges its residents monthly garbage fee for the collection and disposal of the municipal solid waste, MSW, otherwise known as just garbage or trash, and the source separated organic material, which will be referred to as SSOM here in the presentation. Uh, the garbage fees collected from the residents are used to pay the contracted hauling and collection services to essential sanitation for both the MSW and SSOM. The landfill disposal charges for the MSW and the expenditures for the source separated operations that take place on at Creekside, which include building improvements and capital equipment expenditures. The MSW material is disposed of at a local landfill, Spruce Ridge, down in Biskie, at the expense of the refuse fund based on a cost per ton contract rate. And the source separated organic material is collected, that is collected, is received at Creekside where it's composted into a soil product that's currently being used by other city departments. So in the refuse fund, there's really not a whole lot of data to track, other than the tonnages that are received and processed. It's a pretty, pretty basic fund, if you will. Um, so taking a look at this graph here, we've got the MSW tonnages received, SSOM tons received, and then the residual tons received over the course of the last ten, eleven, twelve years. So looking at what we received in two thousand twenty-one, I shouldn't say what we received, but what was collected for MSW, uh, two thousand, two thousand four hundred and twenty-one tons, up slightly from, from two thousand twenty. Um, and you'll notice, obviously, a rather, not super significant, but a bit of a significant jump from two thousand nineteen, uh, between the last two years, which doesn't necessarily coincide with the green line there, the incoming SSOM. But it's assumed that the increase in the last two years of MSW tons is because of the pandemic. People are at home, getting into the purge mode. Obviously, results in tonnages that better being collected by, by West Central and ultimately disposed at the landfill. The green line there, the source separated tons that we received at Creekside, has been a downward trend over the last dozen years or so, a little bit of an uptick last year, which was, again, it's more or less pandemic-related, nice weather, people are at home, people were doing things. Uh, but then we see a significant drop here in two thousand twenty-one, which at this point, we can only allude to weather conditions. It was a hot, dry season. Grass clippings weren't growing, or grass, grass wasn't growing, so people weren't disposing of their clippings in their carts. Uh, just smoky conditions, people weren't working outside, and then society opening back up, people getting out and traveling more. So it'll be interesting to see what happens with that in, in, in two thousand twenty-two here. Uh, the blue line down at the bottom is the residual tonnage that, uh, are ultimately separated from the source separated incoming tons. Um, that two hundred nineteen tons is pretty much on par uh, for the last several years or compared to the last several years, and that's the material that once the SSOM is processed, screened, these are the rejects, the garbage, the inert material that ultimately are picked out via equipment and sent to the landfill. Over the last five, six years, we've pretty much been averaging a fifteen percent contamination rate, um, which it's okay to see that we're maintaining stability there, but there's many programs out there that are five percent, less than five percent, and even quite a few programs that are out at one percent or less contamination rate. So that's something, definitely something we'll be striving for, and I'll touch on it a bit here, a little bit later in the presentation. But, uh, fifteen percent is, you know, status quo isn't good anymore. This is, it's time to, to improve the cleanliness of that material received. So again, noting that there isn't a whole heck of a lot to, to report on, jumping into the financials for the refuse fund. Um, as, as noted here, relatively stable. Uh, we've seen just over one percent increase in revenues for the year, um, following that center column, the two thousand twenty-one prelim. And again, just to note out that these are prelim, the year-end revenues should be pretty well set for the year. However, the expenditures may tick up here in the next few weeks as, as the last few expenses roll in, invoices roll in. So at the end of the year, net revenue of a positive forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-six thousand dollars, forty-eight thousand, two hundred and ninety-six. Feel no, the two thousand twenty-one budget, we were, we actually budgeted for a loss of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That was, the intention there was to do the source separated processing system upgrade in two thousand twenty-one. We ran into some snags with MPCAs, so now that project has been pushed back to two thousand twenty-two. So these expenses will now show in, in two thousand twenty-two, hopefully, uh, providing PCA issues our permit here earlier in the year. Just noting down below, the depreciation, capital outlay, and the transfer out, those are included in the year-end expenditures up above, but just to single them out to, to give you an idea where those are at. The fifty-five thousand dollar transfer to the tree disease infestation mitigation fund has been in place since two thousand ten, and since then has transferred six hundred and sixty-six, six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, excuse me. So moving on to the compost fund, and again, here too, just to give a little clarity on what that fund is responsible for. The Creekside Compost Fund serves as a drop-off site for compostable and recyclable materials such as logs, brush, yard waste, clean, clean concrete and blacktop, and no charge to both residents and contractors. With these materials, Creekside produces, markets, and distributes bulk and bagged compost mixtures, as well as a variety of bulk and bagged colored mulches to local customers and to distributors with a current sales territory of thirteen states, from the Midwest, upper Midwest to the inner Mountain West. Uh, we sell, sell these, Creekside sells the bag products under three labels, the Splendido brand, which is an economy series, the Creekside brand is what we consider a premium series, and then the Wonder Blend, Wonder Blend brand, which we consider a professional series. So if you're out and about looking for your bag soil needs, we would certainly appreciate keeping an eye out for these and helping, helping support Creekside soils. Um, Creekside also supplies horticultural materials along with, it gets the various city departmental projects at a reduced cost. So here too, the, the compost fund is a little more involved, uh, than the refuse, so there's a little bit more data here to track. But starting on the front side of the operation, it all starts with the incoming materials. Um, and this is more or less just the, the yard waste and wood waste received. This doesn't include the concrete and blacktop. This ad information is up and down from year to year based on public works, as their engineering, street projects, and what have you. So it's, it's just a roller coaster of essentially not good data. Um, but looking at two thousand twenty-one, total tonnages received, we're came in at thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen ton, which is pretty much right on par to the last couple of years. Uh, we separated out, it's included in, in the total, but we separated, separated out what the total tonnage is received from the city of Hutch local, um, just shy of coming in a shift, just shy of fifty-four hundred ton. And then the, the red line down below is the residual tons, um, that were, that are generated out of the yard waste material, which is, has been essentially zero for the last numerous years. The reason that is, is because the materials that we receive are clean enough that when it goes through the process, we screen it out. It's more or less just wood and maybe some uncomposted material that we're able to reintroduce back into the system, essentially alleviating a need to, to landfill any, any waste out of that material. At some point, the concentration levels will get high enough that we'll ultimately have to start disposing some of the residuals at the landfill. But, uh, so far, so good. I don't see that for hap, foresee that happening anytime soon. So just looking at the, at the bottom there, just a, a notation, it's kind of a, a split of where the materials come from and what types. Right now, we're, in two thousand twenty-one, we came in at basically a fifty-fifty split yard waste to, to wood waste. Of that total thirteen thousand, seven hundred and fifteen ton, thirty-nine percent of that came from the city of Hutch. Seventeen percent of that came from McLeod County, which is more or less the municipal sites at the other cities in the site when we go and clean them out in the fall. And thirty-three percent of it comes from St. Cloud, in which we mobilize equipment to their site and bring it back to Hutch for further processing. Uh, and then the city of Wilmer came in at eleven percent for more or less fifteen hundred, ten tons of wood waste. So what we do with all that material, once it's processed, we put it in a bag and we sell it. Uh, looking at the center bar graph there on the left-hand side, the two thousand twenty-one, we closed out at one million, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, seven hundred and fifty bags sold. Down approximately fifty thousand bags, or three percent from two thousand twenty. Um, not necessarily a big surprise there, two thousand twenty was a phenomenal year, uh, a weird year with everything going on. Two thousand twenty-one, we didn't really know, necessarily know what to expect, expect, but we were certainly pleased how, how things came out. So just looking ahead to two thousand twenty-two with a one point two, just one million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand bag projection, that's certainly conservative. Um, your guess is as good as ours as to what's going to happen in the market, if there's going to be a correction in the horticultural world or not. So again, just a, a little bit more of a conservative look on, on this year. Hopefully, hopefully, the one point five north, north of one point five million bags becomes the norm, but, um, at this point, we're just, we're, we're looking at being conservative. Jumping over to the right-hand side, the yards of bag, yards of material needed for bagging. Last year, two thousand twenty-one, we bagged just, just shy of fifty-one thousand yards of material, up about a thousand yards from two thousand twenty. Whereas if you look back, you know, the bags sold and you look at the yards of material needed, it doesn't necessarily jive. Um, sold less bags in twenty-one, but we needed, but we bagged more material than the previous year. That's more or less just because of different bag sizes. We bag anything from a half a cubic foot to a three-quarter cubic foot, one cubic foot, two cubic foot, and several in between. So, like in this case, for two thousand twenty-one, we more or less sold more two cubic foot bags, which requires more volume to fill those bags. So hopefully, that helps kind of clarify the discrepancy there and, and why that information doesn't necessarily jive by the, by the look. And then again, just the, the two thousand twenty-two projections with a lower, lower bag sales volume projection, we're looking at just over forty-seven thousand yards at this point of, of yardage needed to, to package for this season. A little quick breakdown of, of the bags, actually, of where they go and who they're for, so to say. Uh, the, the blue part of the, of the pie graph is the Creekside brands, again, the Splendido, the Creekside and the Wonder Blend brands, whereas the red are private label brands. Um, in most cases, the private label brands, the customers are bringing their bulk material to us. We put it in their bag. Um, as you can see in two thousand twenty-one, that number, the private label number decreased by, yeah, give or take sixty-five thousand. Um, and it's more so, we, a long-time customer, actually, out of the metro. Uh, the freight battle logistics finally caught up with them, that they started working with a more local to them bagging contractor, which it, it's one of those things that you certainly can't blame them. I mean, we, we need to maintain profitability. We couldn't lower our price enough to offset their savings or what their expenses were on the freight. So, um, sadly enough, we'll, we'll ultimately lose all of that business here in two thousand twenty-two. However, seeing the increase in the Creekside brands, we're hoping we'll certainly offset that this year and, and, and years to come. Uh, just looking at a couple of the mile-high two thousand twenty-one mentionables, bag sales, as, as just noted, and bag sales once again exceeded projections in two thousand twenty-one due to ideal spring conditions and lingering effects of consumers staying at home. Uh, no BitCon sales in two thousand twenty-one due to lack of inventory, which accounts for approximately a, a decrease of two hundred and forty-five thousand dollars in bulk sales. However, a crushing event did occur in December of twenty-one, just last month, so we will have inventory available here for two thousand twenty-two. Some much-needed bagging line upgrades took place to, uh, an in-feed hopper, conveyor, and a volumetric feeder, um, which will be instrumental as time goes on, and I'll, I'll touch on it here in the, in the financials, but also the objectives here for two thousand twenty-two. And then lastly, was just a redesign of the Splendido brand mulch bag. The old bag design was on the left-hand side, the clearer bag, whereas the, the new design is on the right-hand side. This will be the last of the bag redesigns that we have on tap here for, for several years. We did the Splendido soils here in two thousand twenty. We did the Creekside and the Wonder Blend brands in two thousand twenty, excuse me. Splendido would have been back in two thousand nineteen. The Creekside and Wonder Blend would have been in two thousand twenty, whereas we followed up with, uh, finally, the, the last of them, uh, the Creekside or the Splendido mulch bags here in two thousand twenty-one. So looking at the compost finances for the year, um, year-end revenues came in at just shy of two point nine million, down almost eleven percent from two thousand twenty. Um, and again, noting that we did not have BitCon sales, which accounts for two hundred and forty-five thousand. If that were to have been factored in, that would have closed that gap, would have been just north of three point one million in sales, and only a change of, uh, three percent, down three percent from two thousand twenty. However, as, as the year played out as it did, we still came in nearly five hundred thousand dollars over budget in, in, in year-end revenues. Year-end expenditures, just shy of three point two million. Obviously, it came in above budget, but that'd be, that's because of cost of sales and the increase in, in sales revenue, um, which closed out the year with a net revenue loss of three hundred and six thousand, um, down thirty-seven percent from, from the previous year. But up from, from budget, obviously, a lot of anticipated loss of six hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-six. I think the definitely point, I wanted to point out, which kind of goes back to the, to the bagging line improvements here, is the, the gross profit margin percentage. At this point, two thousand twenty-one is looking to close out at just shy of thirty-seven percent margin, gross profit margin. Up, where we had, yeah, just over three percent, um, from two thousand twenty, but up six percent from, from two thousand twenty-one budget. And a lot of that has to do with our cost of materials aren't necessarily getting any better, just like anything else, prices are increasing, but the efficiencies that we're, that we're seeing with the staff and the equipment, the equipment upgrades that, that we did late last fall. Um, it was later in the year, so it didn't necessarily affect the overall numbers, but that's going to pay dividends moving forward, just more reliability, more, less downtime, um, and, and improved production. So again, just the, like I noted on the refuse fund, it's just singled out the depreciation, capital outlay, and the transfers out just down below. Um, just to give, to give a better idea on the cash flow of the fund. Transfer out of a hundred and ten thousand dollars, it's been at a hundred and ten now for the last four or five years, maybe a little bit longer. But since two thousand nine, the fund has transferred just over one point two million dollars back to the general fund. So looking ahead here to this year, two thousand twenty-two, um, a couple of the, the main objectives is again, this, the, the refuse funds, implementing of the new composting process and equipment for SSOM, which is a covered area static pile. Still waiting, uh, MPCA permit approval. I did have a conversation with our MPCA engineer last week, and things sound favorable. Um, we get the song and dance that they're busy, they're understaffed, overworked, all that good stuff, but he did say, hopefully, within the next, within the next few weeks, that they will, will get on our application and, and he gave me his word whether he can take it for that, but the permit will be issued. So with that being said, we're going to start, start soliciting, um, consultants for the design phase of the work and, and get that project in motion, so we can hopefully break ground on it here late spring, early summer with a completion, anticipate a completion date of, of this fall. Another big item we'll be working on is, uh, formulating an educational campaign for the Creekside program uh, to increase participation and minimize the contamination. Um, we did apply for an MPCA Greater Minnesota Composting Grant through the PCA, obviously, um, to assist in covering those expenses. That's expected to be announced in March, I believe, um, if it will be awarded or not. And if, if we are awarded, that'll be, that'll be huge. Um, it'll be, as men, as noted there, a three, four-year campaign. There's going to be persistence. It's going to, it's not a one-and-done. You know, try to do a, a social media blast or, or something to that effect. I mean, it's going to be a long, ongoing program that will, will hopefully influence behavioral changes, um, in, in what people are, are disposing of in their, in their organics cart. And one of the last things there is to continue to strive to increase the bags per hour production rates through staff training and equipment upgrades. As noted to the, a couple slides ago, the, the equipment upgrades to the bagging line, um, will pay dividends moving forward. In two thousand twenty-one, our overall production rates increased by sixteen point four percent over two thousand twenty to a hundred and, or, excuse me, eight hundred and seventy-three bags per hour, which translates into a hundred and twenty-three bags per hour more in twenty-one than in two thousand twenty. It doesn't sound like a whole heck of a lot, but a hundred and twenty-three bags an hour on an eight-hour shift is a thousand bags. Turn that into five days a week, that's five thousand bags, so on and so forth. You can do the math. That's, that's the, the, the one most key component in our profit margin, um, increasing like it is, is just the efficiencies in that operation, in the bagging operation. We've got awesome staff that take pride and are passionate about what they do, so hats off to them. Hopefully, we can keep them around. Hopefully, everybody stays healthy. Um, but yeah, definitely, definitely huge to, to the, to the success of the department. And just as a side note, in two thousand nineteen, we were at a six hundred and fifty-three bags per hour, up. So two thousand twenty-one actually was up over thirty-three percent, so, which is just phenomenal. Other than that, it kind of goes without saying, but another main objective is just simply to stay healthy throughout the year. So with that, questions, comments?
BitCon, who does that, who do we sell that to?
That's available to anybody, general public, contractors.
If you got to drive where you want to.
Yep, yep, yep. We, it's same price, no matter who buys it, it's all sold by the ton. Um, we do have a thirty-dollar minimum, just to make it worthwhile for our order to, to go back to the pile, but, yep, that's available to anyone. Yep, that's available to anyone, essentially.
It goes pretty quick, though, doesn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, the last, and this, this should have noted too, the crushing event we did here in December was twenty thousand ton. The last several previous crushing events we did were all thirty thousand ton, just because we didn't have the raw feedstocks, um, this last year. Try to say this so it makes sense, the last crushing event took place in the fall of. The fall of nineteen for thirty thousand ton, so we started twenty twenty with thirty thousand tons of available material that was gone by the end of the year. That was gone by the end of, uh, end of fall, basically, the remnants of it went to to a public works job or the pavement management job. So this twenty thousand ton that we have now in inventory is gonna go fast, which is good.
Nice to get back.
Yeah, very much so.
So Andy, on your, uh, mulch, it, it said the red, don't you have different color?
Yeah, that was just thrown on there as one example, yeah, we have red, gold, brown, and we actually added black now to the lineup this year. Um, and then obviously just natural uncolored, so there's five different colors or shades of of mulches that we produce.
Cause you used to have two colors of brown, correct?
We used to.
Yeah.
We used to have a light brown and a dark brown, and we found that there was, um, more interest in the darker brown, so. So we discontinued the light, yeah.
See, I played a game at Hanson Gravel where I would guess which brown I had around my house, and I would guess it wrong every other year, so. So thankfully, you eliminated that issue, but I went back and forth about four, five years, sure, light brown, dark brown, light brown, dark brown, so.
Anything else for Andy? Thank you very much, Andy.
Thank you.
Do we have a public hearing?
We actually got. The E D A public hearing first.
Modification to the development program for the develop district number four. And the creation of a tax increment finance plan for the establishment of Tish District. Number four dash twenty two. The redevelopment district.
Uh, Mayor Council, this is actually similar to what we took on at the last meeting, um, the developer's still working on. Some information, so I guess we would ask, correct, right, Mark, to have him call it to. Have him call a public hearing order and then to, um.
Entertain a motion to continue the public hearing till six o'clock, February eighth.
Well, it would be five o'clock in February.
Seven o'clock, February eighth, because we have an election that day.
Yep, so. We won out.
You have any motion out?
Motion by Pat, second by Mary to. Approve, any other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Open the public hearing?
Nope, you just recessed it. Now you can go to item number nine.
Mary. Assessment hearing and project award for the two thousand twenty two pavement management program. Project letting number one, number twenty two oh one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, uh, like was mentioned, uh, we're, we're administering the. The assessment hearing and ultimately, uh, the project award for our letting number one, our, our pavement management program project this year. Uh, I'll start out, I'll just, uh, review the scope of the project, we'll talk a little bit about the bids, uh, touch on assessments and. Uh, I'll just touch on, uh, what final costs and how the funding, uh, is being arrived at for the project also. So with that, uh, here's a drawing, I know council's seen a few times over the last few years, as we've, uh. Administered work down in the, uh, Linden Park Rec Center.
Can you turn it on to the?
There we go, uh, anyways, uh, yeah, so, uh, we started on the, uh, the east side, uh, back in, uh. In, uh, twenty twenty one, uh, the green streets, the red streets, uh, we also administered, uh. The blue on the west side, we did some overlay work back in twenty twenty, uh, administered through our, our maintenance, our street maintenance funds. And then ultimately, uh, going into twenty twenty two here, uh, we're in the, uh, the final, uh, yeah, phase of the project, the purple streets. Linden Sunset, uh, short, the segment of, uh, Laura, the one cul-de-sac. And then down on Neal Avenue and Key Street. I should mention, obviously, the, the pond project, uh, was administered in, uh, twenty. Twenty also, I gotta think back, no, actually, twenty nineteen, excuse me, it's been a few years. Uh, so with that, yeah, we're, we're glad to see this, uh, this work come to a close down in this neighborhood. As far as how we're gonna phase the work or stage the work and how we've, uh, prescribed it for the contractor within our, our bidding documents. Just briefly, and I won't get into the gory details, but, uh, we do, you know. Specify dates and how we wanna see this administered, but in summary. Uh, phase one, uh, will be, uh, the, uh, the north end of Sunset Street. Uh, and then down on Key Street, so we'll, we'll go in and, uh, we'll get the contractor started. Early May to do that work for about a month, uh, that'll then allow, uh, I guess, uh. Side street parking to occur, that'll get that area to a gravel grade, really, Key Street is. Really doesn't have those issues, but we really wanted to knock out the, uh, northerly end of Sunset. Uh, so ultimately, as we enter phase two or stage two, excuse me, uh, the south end of Sunset. That, uh, that area up there to the north of, uh, well, the north end of Sunset would be available for parking on a gravel grade. Uh, what becomes problematic in this area, obviously, are the, uh, the two cul-de-sacs, uh. You know, the access limitations that that presents, uh, you know, that's the other reasoning for, for addressing that area. Uh, immediately adjacent to Laura Avenue right up, right out about, uh, then we'll get into stage, uh. Two, which is a combination of the area down here, the, uh, south end of Sunset. Neil Avenue, and then we'll let the contractor loose up here on the stretch of Linden, just to do the, uh, spot utility work. We're not doing full scale watering sewer main replacements, but we are doing some spot gate valves, hydrants. Uh, I think we have a, uh, storm manhole involved up in Linden there also. And a little bit of sanitary sewer work that needs to be done. Uh, that's with the caveat, that's the note down in the lower right corner on our planning sheet here. That one of these access points, uh, into the Southview neighborhood. Southview Court and Southview Drive respectively, uh, be left open during stage two. And ultimately, stage three, which will be the, uh, the roadway work on Linden Avenue. So, and if there's any questions from council, this is a very detailed prescribed staging plan. Uh, contractors generally don't like this, but, uh, we do this, we've been doing this for, for many years. Uh, basically to protect the interests of the, the adjacent property owners, so contractor doesn't simply rip up. Rip open the whole project, uh, do this, do that, as weather and rains come and. You know, mud is created and such, uh, you know, and then, you know, we're left with a large mud hole over a. The extents of the project conceivably, this really limits that risk with only allowing basically two, three blocks. Uh, being open at one given time, we don't believe this results in a whole lot of. Extra, I guess, overhead mobilization costs on the contractor's end.
So it starts in May and then what?
Yep.
Kind of timeframe?
Ultimately, yeah, redefine print, uh, May second is the, uh, the start date that we've, uh. Specified up there on the top, and then ultimately, the final completion date is September sixteen. With those, you know, variety of interim dates along the way. Project cost wise. This is the original engineer's estimate, uh, back when we ordered the, uh, the public hearing months ago. Uh, that's, that would be this column here, uh, and then ultimately. It's our, our funding breakdown per, per the, uh, actual bids that we received, uh, back in mid-December. Protocost wise, uh, about, uh, a difference of, uh, hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. Uh, and then we, we actually looked at the, uh. The funding breakdown and really the, the big change here is the cost of the, uh, storm. Water work, which is really what's, uh, what's being arrived at is the discharge. Of the pond into Linden Avenue, so there's large pipe involved, large concrete structures. And then also the extension of that system to the south on Sunset, down to to Neal Avenue. And ultimately, South Grade Road, to more efficiently drain that South Grade and Sunset intersection. Which is historically had some flooding issues, uh, similar to to Merrill to the east, that's. We extended that storm sewer system to last year. So, what, what happened, really, the increase in cost, uh, was in those, that large concrete pipe. Those large concrete structures, uh, pre, basically the precast concrete industry, so. Yeah, otherwise, we were pretty right, right on estimate, uh, with, uh, with respect to the bids. So really, uh, the overrun, uh, will be buried by the, uh, Stormwater Utility Fund in the end. Uh, assessment wise, yeah, the, the assessment rolls within the packet. Uh, none of the, uh, proposed assessments to the respective property owners have changed from. Basically, day one, when we communicated the estimated assessments to property owners, uh, when we ordered the assessment. Or not the assessment, you're in the public hearing months ago, so we haven't heard a whole lot from property owners with respect to. Assessments over the last few months, and then lastly, city staff administered a construction. Uh, meeting, we called it, uh, and we more so, we focused on, uh, the Southview. Court and Drive neighborhood, and then the two cul-de-sacs, Laura and Craig, really to bring those. Property owners into the conversation, as, as we now know, our specified completion dates, really to give them an update, what's. What's gonna happen on the project, how it's gonna impact, you know, their access into their. Their homes, quite frankly, uh, to get to their respective streets, uh, like I said, Southview. Uh, area, we, we have a good plan, we believe it's, uh, conceivable that the contractor can maintain access up into that area. And stages work, uh, accordingly along Linden, uh, the two cul-de-sacs, obviously, there's gonna be times when. You're not gonna be able to get a vehicle in those, those cul-de-sacs, we're gonna try to minimize that and, uh, provide parking down in the rec center parking lot. And I believe that's about it, the, the two resolutions, adopting the assessment rule and, uh, accepting the bids and awarding the project. Are within your packet, and then also the bid tabulation, uh, with all the detail. Uh, with respect to the five bids that we received back on December fifteenth is also included. Uh, wanna know, like I, like I mentioned, the, the low bid was about seven percent over our final engineer's estimate. Uh, we were a little bit surprised by that, honestly, uh, we thought with bidding the project as early as we did. Uh, in the, you know, the, the winter months here, uh, you know, with the. Most, uh, local agencies aren't getting a project of this nature out to bids prior to the holidays. Uh, we thought we might get a better price, uh, we thought our estimate was a, a, a good estimate. Based on recent, uh, unit prices that we've seen, so I think that just reflects, uh, what's going on out in the industry and. Honestly, what, uh, what may continue to occur into the future with respect to the, uh, construction industry and costs, uh. You know, oil and labor and. Materials issues, uh, out there, yeah, I don't right now see the end of it, but, uh, yeah. I think, uh, we were, we were surprised, I'll just say that much, we thought we might get a number lower than our estimate, but, uh. Like I said, the low number was seven percent higher. With that, entertain any questions, thoughts?
It'll be a busy area, you know, when the pool opens, you have all that traffic and and the people that are trying to get in and out and. You know, but it has to be done, so.
Yeah, and obviously, we'll, we'll work with, uh, the Parks Department, like we've, we did, uh. Uh, the last few years, when, uh, the parking lot work and the, uh, the work was being done to the east of, uh, the rec center, you know, to, uh. Yeah, we're gonna not wanna see any of that pool traffic, you know, trying to get onto Sunset by all means, so, yeah, that's gonna be isolated and, uh. And, uh, we'll have the Parks Department communicate as such.
Anything else for Ken? Open it up for public.
Yeah, you didn't want, or, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, open, open it up for public comment, just please come forward and state your name and address.
Yeah, I can step outside, yeah, once the hearing's done here.
Motion to.
Any else? Motion to approve?
No, motion to close the public hearing. Do you wanna make the motion? Yes, I'm sorry. I'll second that. You're still new, it's okay.
Who's jumping ahead?
By Pat, second by Chad to close the public hearing, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, uh, can we do both resolutions, Matt? We have two resolutions, uh, we have resolution number one, five, four, one, five, resolution, accepting bids and awarding contracts. And resolution number one, five, four, one, six, resolution, adopting assessments.
Make a motion to approve them both?
I'll second.
Motion by Chad, second by Mary to approve both resolutions, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
Alright, thank you.
I'm Ken. We have no unfinished business, uh, new business. I apologize if I kill your name, so. Uh, issuing tattoo license to Douglas Molington? Of Vella, Vella Hara Tattoo located at eighteen Main Street.
Uh, Mayor Council, earlier in the night, you guys approved, uh, I believe it was a conditional use permit, um, and so with that adoption. Um, Mr. Molton's looking for, um, a license to perform the business, so there was a background check and. There's no objections to the, the license from, uh, the police department, so staff would. Um, I guess ask the council to consider, uh, approval of the license.
Make a motion to approve the license, second.
Dave thirded.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, carried. Welcome.
Good luck.
Adopting legislative priorities for two thousand twenty two.
Uh, Mayor and Council, um, at least, I think, probably going back now, five or six years, we've, uh. We've done an annual basis, tried to approve legislative priorities, and this is just more or less a, a document that we communicate to our legislators. Um, regarding several different items, uh, maybe impacting, um, the city. Not a whole lot has changed, um, from the, the previous years, there are little things that. That we've, uh, taken out the list, uh, because they've been addressed, um, some of them have been on here for, um, quite some time, just as, uh. uh, because they've been addressed, um, some of them have been on here for, um, quite some time, just as, uh, as, uh, many things are going to the legislature in multiple years and some is just, I guess, an opportunity for us just to make a statement, um, regarding other items. And so we want to at least give the, the opportunity for the council to take a look at these, ask any questions. Um, this is a culmination of input from both the directors, uh, myself and even elected officials that have occurred over the years. And so unless you had any specific questions, I ask for you to, I guess, consider, uh, uh, these priorities for the two thousand twenty-two legislative session.
Second.
Motion by Dave, second by Mary to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried, uh, setting canvassing board meeting.
Sorry, I have to pull it up here, so. Obviously with our, uh, special election that, uh, is taking place on February eighth, we need to set a time to canvass those election results, and that it can take place anytime between February eleventh and February eighteenth. Just really up to the council, it's what a five-minute meeting, I think, where you.
Sometimes six.
Sometimes six, yeah, where you re, basically read off the results of the, and you have to canvass those, uh, results, so. I think a lot of times we've done it, uh, Friday morning, um, after the election, but it's really up to, to you guys to determine when you wanna do that, so.
So that Friday would be the eleventh?
Yep.
I may be on a town that day, but like, as long as you have a quorum, it doesn't matter.
Correct.
Yeah.
Eleven, what time?
Seven o'clock.
We weren't referring to after eight, so. Yeah, it's eight thirty, so.
There is two, seven o'clock.
I was gonna say six.
That's fine, I'm up to anyway, so, uh, eight, eight o'clock?
On Friday?
Friday?
Yep.
Yeah, they work for you? Okay.
Need a motion for that?
Yes.
Okay, canvassing board will meet on eight o'clock, February eleventh.
Second.
Motion by Mary, second by Dave to set the date for canvassing board. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Uh, we have Public Arts Commission minutes from December eighth, two thousand twenty-one. We have the Hutchinson-Housner Development Authority Board Minutes from December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. The two thousand twenty-one Residential Leaf Vacuum Service Annual Report and Planning Commission Minutes from September twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Uh, staff update, uh, Chief Gibson. I know, I don't know if you have anything else, but I'd like you to, uh, talk about the snowmobiles, you know, where they can run and where they're not supposed to be.
Sure, good evening, everyone. Mayor Forsier asked me to speak regarding snowmobile, I guess the local ordinances regarding those, and, um, also, I guess maybe just snowmobile etiquette, is probably a good way to put it. Takes me about a half hour to go over all the ordinances, so I'm not gonna do that, but, um, I think the reason that, uh, I was asked to speak about this is there's been some complaints about snowmobiles in parks, um, specifically Veterans Memorial Park, and, um, just the ordinance states that, um, you, you need to keep your snowmobile on the trail. Um, this is more for the public than you all, but, um, keep your snowmobile on the trail, um, and parks, playgrounds, golf courses, cemeteries, uh, school grounds, just about everywhere in, in the city of Hutchinson is off limits to snowmobiles except for the trail and the roadway. So our, our ordinance talks about, um, tr, taking the most direct route to and from, um, either the trail or the city limits. Um, so the best way to do that is on the street. Um, unfortunately for snowmobilers, the Public Works Department does an excellent job of clearing snow, so unless they wanna drive their snowmobile down a tar road, which I don't recommend, uh, the best way to do that is, uh, with a trailer. And there's plenty of spots within the city, uh, along the loose line trail that they can utilize for loading and unloading their snowmobiles. Um, on Fellow's Park, um, is a good example. Um, it's probably the, also the park that gets used inappropriately the most, um, only because it is a good fueling stop if people are coming on and off the river and that type of thing. But technically, um, you're not supposed to be using your snowmobile in a public park, so. Um, we are a little bit lenient with that, again, only because it is a pretty common fuel stop for folks, but, um, if there's damage that occurs, then, uh, we need to hold people accountable for that as well, so. I don't know, any other questions regarding that, or? Um, fortunately, we've had kind of a late winter, uh, as far as snowfall is concerned. Um, and so we really haven't received the complaints, um, that we normally do by this time of the year, but now with the little extra snow that we received over the past week, we are starting to receive them, so. Just good public information more than anything. Any questions?
Tom, maybe you wanted to touch on, we had, we did have one snow emergency and I guess what we saw from that?
Sure. Yep, uh, I don't even recall what day it was now, but, uh.
Friday, Saturday, so.
Friday and Saturday, so, um, snow emergency was declared, uh, as is customary, the first snow emergency of the year or of the snow season. Um, we only ticket and do not tow, and so we followed that same procedure again this year. Um, and I believe, if I remember correctly, it was ninety-five parking citations that were issued between midnight and five-thirty AM, so.
And that was actually probably lower than what we've had in the past.
That's, that's better than usual, though. Um, been times where we've towed that many, so.
Makes the towing company happy.
Makes the Public Works happy when they're off the road too, so. I just, I, you know, I would just urge people that there's several different ways that you can access information on when a snow emergency has been declared, um, and whether or not your, your road outside your home has been plowed or not, the snow emergency's still in effect. So I think that's a misconception with a lot of people is that, uh, while my road was clear, so I park on the road, um, and that's not the way it works, uh, it's till seven AM, um, so between the hours of midnight and seven AM during a snow emergency.
Yeah, and I, I state that we are very reserved, I would say hesitant about calling a snow emergency. We don't do it very often and, uh, and we're doing it primarily just as a cleaning operation to expedite that. And, you know, that usually is happening a day removed from the actual snow event, if not made possibly a little longer, so I think that's why people, like, like Chief Gibson alluded to, uh, yeah, this, the roadway may be cleared to some degree because the initial plowing activity certainly has happened, but there's, during these larger events, we wanna clean the roadway curb to curb, so that's why we're calling the snow emergency sometimes almost a day later after the event. So I can see where there can be some confusion from the general public, but we are very reserved at calling a snow emergency and, and don't wanna put the, the PD, you know, in a spot where we need to tow a hundred vehicles, we wanna avoid that by all means, so.
Yeah, I think this one was actually at one of those events where it was snowing quite a bit during the day, so it wasn't necessarily a, a day removed even.
Yeah.
And the, or Chief Gibson?
Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Uh, already, um, Ken?
Yes, uh, a few items. Uh, in front of you are, are two letters, uh, with respect to US Highway two-twelve and the ongoing efforts to, uh, secure funding for improvements. And obviously from the city's standpoint, we, we, uh, we support these efforts, uh, and we advocate for them as, as much as possible, that these efforts are primarily led by, uh, Carver County. And with that, uh, the one letter, uh, they're both have today's date on them, but the one letter is, uh, I guess I'll call it the Dear Sir Madam Letter. That's just a general, uh, support letter that can be passed on to Carver County and other advocates as they compile basically a group of letters from cities and counties, uh, to, to go to state legislators and actually our, our federal, uh, legislators also. And then the second one's a, a more specified, I guess, specific letter, uh, with respect to a, uh, a plan update that's being administered by the Met Council, uh, with respect to, uh, the portion of two-twelve between, uh, Newark and America and, um, Cologne. So that five-mile stretch, I guess I'll call it the Easterly Gap, uh, on two-twelve, the Easterly, uh, two-lane gap that, uh, ultimately is, uh, being sized up for four lanes. And I know if you've driven through there, I guess, uh, last, uh, later last summer and fall, you know, if you, uh, took the trip all the way into the cities, uh, into the Carver area there, uh, you obviously probably noticed the substantial amount of dirt work, earthwork, uh, uh, activity going on. So, uh, yeah, the, uh, westerly gap area is, is well underway, construction-wise. So with that, yeah, I would just, uh, unless there's any, any thoughts or concerns for council, I'll ask, uh, Mayor Forsier to sign these letters so I can pass them on.
Yeah, and I would just know, we've, this is something we've done on a regular basis. Um, it's been something that we've got on the record of supporting, at least since I've been here, noting that really two-twelves probably the greatest access to, uh, to, I guess, large freight, um, that we have for our community, so.
Otherwise, uh, within the packet earlier this evening on the consent agenda, just, uh, quickly wanna touch on, we're, we're gonna begin the, uh, project development of a bridge deck sealing project for, uh, all four of our bridges, and we've included the, uh, the Adams Street Bridge, which is now under the, yeah, county's jurisdiction. Um, and, uh, we're, we're sizing up that project and, uh, hopefully we can get its scope, get it out for bids. And, uh, just wanna note that, uh, staff is beginning to look at the, uh, traffic, uh, impacts and traffic control, I guess, approach to this project, depending on the, the amount of work for each respective bridge. Uh, and there's some joint repair work that needs to be done on Fifth Avenue and School Road Bridges respectively. Those are obviously our, our older bridges. Uh, the work on those bridges may be somewhere, uh, you know, for like Second Avenue and South Grade Road, the newer bridges might be around a week, the other bridges might be impacted for three weeks, so. Obviously, it's gonna be a fairly significant traffic, uh, you know, closure on School Road and Fifth Avenue specifically, so. Uh, just wanted to make note of that, and that's what that project's gonna entail. Um, bonding wise, uh, the governor released his, uh, bonding list, uh, a week or so ago, and, uh, the hats bonding, hats facility bonding was included on his list. Uh, the lakes improvements or the, uh, Civil Air Patrol, uh, was not included. And that was, I think, to be, you know, suspected, uh, the, our local legislators, specifically Representative Erdahl, has really been our, our, uh, advocate on the lakes improvements project, so, uh, we look forward to seeing, I guess, the House's bonding list in the future here.
You know, they noted having three projects come out of the community, it would be extremely difficult to, to see funded, so.
And then, couple of items, snow removal wise, yeah. Uh, snow's starting to pile up out there, obviously boulevards are getting a little full, uh, but, uh, we, we can't have, uh, citizens plowing, pushing snow into the roadway. Obviously, we have an ordinance against that and we don't wanna see that, so, yeah, keep the, the snow within the yards and on the boulevards. And then, uh, also, our sidewalks and, uh, trails are starting to be impacted too, and, uh, staff's gonna be out checking on our, our key routes, uh, and enforcing our ordinance to some degree on that front with respect to snow removal on the sidewalks and trails. And then lastly, I just wanna say a thank you to Rice Lake Contracting out on our almost five million dollar wastewater headworks project. Uh, you know, obviously it's been a fairly chilly month here in January, and, uh, they've been hard at it out there. You know, the, the vast majority of the, the work going on out there is still exposed to the elements, uh, what they're doing, so. Uh, they are making, uh, uh, plenty of headway out there on that project and wanna thank them for their efforts.
That's it?
Thanks, Ken. Mister Subor?
Nothing else tonight.
Pat, let's start with you.
Go, alright. Um, not much, things are, other than, uh, with the cold weather, but we're supposed to get a warm-up, so. We don't have to have as many layers of clothing.
Well, you being a, in a freeze salesman, I think that's good for your business, isn't it?
Pretty consistent no matter what the weather.
Dave, do you have anything for us?
No, I don't, just be safe on the roads.
Harry?
Um, last weekend I got to speak to the fifty-five and older group at Crosspoint Church, and I gave them a little update on what was happening in the city, but before I did that, I gave them a little history of our city. So it was a nice group of people, was nice to attend, and I thank them for asking me. And I have one other thing. Um, people who are out riding their bicycles at six o'clock in the morning should at least have a light on their bike or be wearing some reflective gear, you know, I'm, I'm out and about at that time of the morning, and I could've hit somebody real easy this morning if I wouldn't have been really looking in the dark, but. And I don't know if they're riding, if they're going to work or whatever, but there's a lot of people who are riding their bikes, and they should at least have a headlight on that bike or be wearing something reflective, so just think about that when you're out and about it in the dark.
Let's include walkers and runners too, in that?
Oh, totally.
Absolutely.
Yeah. That's it.
Thanks, Mary. Pat?
I don't have anything extra today.
Mister Yannick?
Um, just a quick reminder that our next meeting in, on February eighth, start at four, four PM in the afternoon, because February eighth is our special election for the seat currently held by Pat, so. Just those reminders, that's it for me.
Um, Ken kinda touched on it, but I had, uh, a few people come up to me and asked if we could plow some more of the trails in the city limits for walking trails, uh, like the one by the dog park, from the dog park, there be the depot up to Second Avenue?
Yeah, we haven't historically plowed that, it's not on our priority list.
Yeah.
And it's, really doesn't.
I said, I'm gonna bring it up.
Transportation or a, a school kid purpose, so, yeah.
There is a lot of walkers that use that trail, I know, so.
Yeah, I can, that one's, it's, yeah, that's not gonna be, it's got some drifting dynamics too, obviously, but.
No, yeah, that.
I can.
Yeah, I'm the one around the back.
Yeah, I mean, obviously the loose line trail is implode, you know, so we kinda treat that in a similar manner, but, uh, no, we can talk about it, I hate to make any promises because that's, uh, that spills over into the Parks Department's, uh, you know, their portion of the snow removal effort, but I'll mention it.
I don't know, have you guys had any comments about that?
Uh-uh.
Nope.
Well, now that I brought it up. Well, not that I brought it up. Otherwise, um it's all I have, stay warm, uh this reminder, like Mary said it. In these cold temperatures, the intersections do get slippery, uh Chief Gibson, I'm sure he can test to that, the. A little slippery out there, so be careful on the sidewalks and driving, so.
Do your fire hydrants.
Oh. You mentioned it last time, so.
I knew you would.
Yeah, well, you can mention it again, it's your, it's your thing.
It was kinda, it was kinda neat, cause I seen a a when a Eagle Scout. Kinda took it upon him, that was part of his Eagle Scout deals to uh clear hydrants, so he had something on Facebook about it. But uh like uh, yeah, especially what winds like today, I mean, they do drift shut, so. Um help with the firefighters out, I mean, it uh. The few minutes that it takes them to dig out a hydrant, the fire grows real fast, so. Uh please take care of a hydrant if it's in front of your house. With that?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Pat, second by Chad to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry.